Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Monday, June 12th, 2017. Joining us standing in closing here is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, do you want to tell the board what it meant?
Yeah, well, she is. Well, she's probably in the banquet room. I think she might have been covering for help. I'm not sure.
Well, and that was one of the reasons why I suggested a fourth person last year. Because usually if you if you offer three interviews, at least one is going to fall out. And having a little more breadth of review doesn't necessarily hurt the process. Do we want to try to set a meeting and bring in the most qualified person outside of the ones with municipal experience? We could ask when Clarence gets back because we could still set a meeting for Wednesday and bring somebody in.
Yeah, but basically what we really wanted to do was to have somebody with municipal experience. That's my feeling on the situation. I don't know how Clarence feels.
What's that?
We'd like to have someone with municipal experience.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, instead of just somebody who's never had any.
Yeah, yeah. We have some choices based on what's made available to us. So we do have those people, at least the two we're talking to tonight, both have municipal experience.
And I know that the employees have even said, you know, that they'd like, you know, the financial team has said they'd like to get somebody in here because there's a lot of work to do.
Well, it also gets back to your meeting and the timing of getting your work done.
And also, and also, I guess what's coming up too is the registration to go to school, to go to treasurer's school. So I've got to get all that in too with somebody.
Yeah. I'll do it.
Okay.
Right. I was just wondering if you wanted to set up another meeting for Wednesday for any of the other applicants where at least one of the three fell out.
They said decision at 7:15.
Okay.
All right. I'd like a motion to entertain and approve the expense warrant for 6/13/17 for $4,026.19 and for 6/13/17 for $41,918.95.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then I would also like them to have a motion to entertain the monthly reports in many some other departments, the cultural council for 5/8/17 and monthly fire report for May 7.
I'll make that.
I'm sorry. I'll second it. Could you make sure certain I get a copy of those?
Of what?
Of the warrants? Of the reports.
Oh, sure, sure. Sure, sure, okay. Any discussion or anything?
There's some anniversaries you might want to mention on the fire one.
Okay. All right. Oh, yes, I saw like the other day. Okay, we have all on the, from the fire department, we have some anniversaries. We have Assistant Chief Herbert Chafee, who has been with us for 40 years. Firefighter Philip Chafee, who is Herb's son, he's been with us for 19 years. Firefighter Matthew Phillips, who's been with us for four years. And firefighter Ashley Marks for four, and firefighter Megan Kimble for four years.
Excellent.
That's excellent. Herb, 40 years, that's a long time to be here. Okay. Where's my agenda going at? Okay, so we'll move on to announcements. Join Brookfield Indivisible, a new regional grassroots action group for a workshop titled Our Climate, Our Kids: What Will Big Future Look Like? At 2:00 PM Sunday, June 25th, at the Brookfield Congressional Church, 8 Common Street. Dr. Jean Fry, Brookfield's own science guy, and Senator Ian Goldie, Democrat of Spencer, are featured speakers. This event is free and open to the public and refreshments will be served. Okay, we are candidate, one of our candidates in here, so I'll go up to municipal transfer.
Public access. Do you want to do that?
Oh, is there any, didn't have that on yet, I don't think. Is there any public access this evening? Okay. Municipal transfers. Okay, we have a municipal transfer here from Chief Michael Blanchard to the amount of $2,000 to go to the police expense account. And it would come from the police station expense account. And it's a cover year in expenses.
You make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's why we consolidate those accounts this year is to simplify the foreman's accounting.
Yep.
All right.
Sorry. My pocket was talking to me.
I just found something here from Brandon. So now we'll move on to, there's no other? Oh, yes, we also have other. We have Concerts on the Common.
I'll have to get a chair.
Brookfield Concerts on the Common, Friday, the weekend of July. Creepshow warm-up bands, Sound Hope Variety Acts. Baking competition with cash prizes start at 6:00 PM, headline bands at 6:30. Friday, July 7th. Yes. Oh, 4 o'clock, Harrington Hospital Health Truck, Harrington on Wheels will be on site during the extreme excitement generated by tonight's three acts. At 5 o'clock, the BES Jazz Band, 5:30, Henry the Juggler and 6:30, the Blues Brothers Brief Kicks. And baking contest, his cookies of all time, kind. Friday, July 14th, the New England Swing Orchestra, baking contest will be cookbreads. Friday, the 21st, cold turkey. And baking contest will be cupcakes. Judges need is pork baking. In the event of rain, concerts will be canceled. For more info, call Bill Simpson at 508-867-9233 and Jean Lidle at 508-867-6705. Okay. And for correspondence here, we have something from our tax collector. She says, hi, everyone. Just wanted to say thank you again for the support on Friday. I'm looking forward to moving onward and upward. On another note, I know the treasurer applicants are established. I'm asking you to appoint someone at the early beginning. Refunds need to be issued and dates need to be set up regarding opening enrollment for school.
This must be Nancy.
Hi, yes. Sit here. Hi. Nice to meet you.
Awesome.
Quite so.
Nice to meet you.
Hi.
Hey, Linda, long time no see.
Oh, my goodness, you've got long hair.
Yeah. Okay, we'll just do one last one. Okay, and we have something here from the Brookfield Cultural Council. Thank you, dear select board. We want to thank you for participating in the Memorial Day ceremony this year and every year. We really appreciate your dedication and heartfelt speeches from the Brookfield Cultural Council. Okay, do we have anything other that we want to bring up this evening? Then we'll move on to our treasurer interview.
You're doing public access here, Linda?
We did earlier.
Oh, you did?
You were here.
You just did announcements, right?
We did.
No, we did public access and then hit other.
You'll have to say a few things.
All right, as long as it's short.
I'll make it short, brief, and to the point and truthful.
Okay.
You know, the way that meeting went, you guys, you guys really said I have to be more of a leadership, have more leadership, more management, more hands-on of what's going on in this town. You're going to break this town financially. We shouldn't, all that stuff we bought, trucks, more trucks, that's all the highway does is work on trucks down there. They're not even out on the road. They're constantly working on vehicles because there's so many down there. I mean, we cannot just keep financially running the town like this. It's not good. And you're going to have to be more of a hands-on leadership and management of what's going on in this town. You really are. And we can't, you are serving the whole elected people in this town, not just a handful of, what do you want to call it, select group, special group, whatever you want to call it. Can't be doing that. You're going to break this town financially. What, how that meeting ran and what came out was terrible, terrible. We shouldn't have been buying that dump truck when the DOR specifically, specifically told us not to do anything unless it was emergency, absolutely needed.
But then where that is concerned, in October, when he has to go for inspection on that vehicle, he won't be able to get a sticker on it.
Linda, we don't need three one tons. That truck was replaced back in '02.
Yeah, but what he's doing, that is coming off the road because it cannot go back.
Good, we don't need three one tons.
He needs to be.
Get three full-time guys. Next year, you're probably going to be wanting to put two more guys on this town.
One thing I can say for her, he hasn't really had a lot of new trucks in years. What he does is he takes parts off of old vehicles that are down there.
Yeah, sort of other towns.
Well, he does, and he's always working on the old vehicles. A lot of his trucks he's got down there that he filed, they're 1973s, they're old vehicles. And he's always taking the parts just to keep those going so that he doesn't have to always come back for a new truck like that to the town because that's going to cost us more than $59,000.
Linda, that truck was supposed to have been given to the cemetery. They've spent like 15.
We've gone over this about a week.
Excuse me, can I speak?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I just want to point out the fact that it's currently 6:15 and I'd prefer to.
That's good. So let's let me finish what I have to say. Every time I want to talk, talk to you people nicely, you interrupt me.
But we have a, we have a candidate to explain to.
Okay, so I got a couple, two more minutes.
Couple more minutes.
All I wanted to say was, we have, that truck was replaced back in '97 and we replaced it again. We don't need three one tons. And don't tell me there's seven 1973 trucks down there because there's not. I don't want you getting that information. So try to be hands-on and follow what's going on in the departments. And stop bringing our tax rate, it's going to go through the ceiling the way you three are operating.
It's not affecting the tax rate at all. Thank you.
Those aren't affecting the tax rate.
No, I'm talking about in overall, I'm not just talking about the truck, I'm talking about the whole picture.
Yes, but what we're going to do is, we already made the motions when we had our meeting before the town meeting last week, all of the money that we took from stabilization and we got our free cash, it's going to be voted back into it.
I understand that. That's not, I'm talking about before the meeting and doing what we did at the meeting, the whole package of what we're doing financially. Do you need to, do you need to get hands-on and have some leadership is what I'm trying to tell you. I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just suggesting that you need to take a look at these departments and be hands-on is what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, I've tried to be hands-on. I've talked to all different departments.
I truly believe that I have become very hands-on also.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm just talking under the whole picture is what I'm trying to say.
All right, well, we'll take that under advisement then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Sorry, held you up, Nancy.
That's okay. All right, our first candidate tonight is Nancy Talbot. And Nancy worked for us years, talking back to, I'd say for like 2000?
I was here for 9/11, 2001, 2002.
Yeah, she was here a couple of years when we had a change of, you know, treasurer collector, and our collector was new at the time, and Nancy came in, she helped her out a lot, and she was very good at what she did.
You had a lot of open books too.
Yeah, we had a lot of open books at the time.
We closed those and got some money.
Yeah, she helped out a lot, yes. Okay.
Are you Karen? I just wanted.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Karen, I didn't want to just ignore you because we spoke on the phone.
Okay. Okay, we see here Nancy has her, with all of her professional experience, and she, to the present, she is up in the town of Barry, and before that, she was in Collins. So she's got a lot of years.
26 of them.
26 years.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Okay, one of the first questions I can ask, and what we can do with rotating questions, what qualities do you have that would make you successful as a town treasurer?
Well, besides the fact that I've been doing it successfully, you have to have a great deal of attention to detail. You have to have a thorough understanding of how each and every department interacts about, in order to balance out, you've got to know the flow and a little bit of what Dave was saying is, you know, I kind of know what's being spent and what's going to be borrowed and where we're at and what percentage we're at. So it takes a lot of experience and skill and real attention to the detail of what is going on today, day-to-day in the departments to be a successful treasurer and to be able to know how to balance and how to interpret law and make sure that you're in compliance with it, which I have a background, I'm a law firm attorney, which that was a very easy thing for me to do. And I think just doing it all the time and hands-on, you just really know what you're looking at. It doesn't take you long to look at a set of books, look at something and know exactly what you're looking at.
Thank you. We'll go along with Mr. Snyder. What's the next one?
Great, yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
The second question, we have, we have a set, set of questions.
I got it done.
So we're completely unbiased as far as the questions. Tell us what you think the essential functions are of the town treasurer.
Oh, wow, she's got a lot of them. Payroll, oversight of payroll, personnel, new, new rules such as ACA, Obamacare.
Yep.
Yeah. The borrowing, I know at any given time, we have 22 bank accounts, and I know at any given time, what is in those bank accounts, what's covering, what, what's moving where, when to move it. I mean, it's just that, think, your fingertips on, on the reins, so to speak. I do everything from, right now, I'm both collector and treasurer, so anytime there's an error somewhere in the computer software system, it's on my desk. It's mine to fix. I call myself Mrs. Fixing. Let's see, what else do I do? I do unemployment, I handle bands, bonds, I handle, not every day, of course, but the debt schedule, vouchers, payments, receipts, deposits from other accounts. Geez, I'm going down the list thinking, what did I do today? Turnovers. My goodness. Balancing with the, with the collector, balancing with the accountant, billing, but you, treasurers don't have to worry about that. I'm just thinking of all the things I have to worry about, which is a whole lot.
Lot of computer.
Oh, I'm going for my new glasses on Thursday. 11 hours a day is taxing on you. I've got my dominant eye, that's two and a half octics off. So, yeah, a lot of computer. I'd say I live on the computer. I pretty much don't stray from my desk. Those are just some of the things I do. It's a lot.
Yep.
Pleasure. So can you tell us a little bit about your experience with any financial software?
Well, I've used Munis. I don't like it at all. I've used Vada for 20 years and they've been in office, they've been in business for many years. I am familiar with everything from the assessors to the collector to the treasurers to the accounting package. I've pretty much, when they first started, I was one of their test sites. There were six sites chosen, and I helped them develop it, tell them what it needed to do. It was just a group of college kids.
May I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I thought Vada did not have an assessor module.
The assessors do, do have, indeed have modules. They use the abatement, the exemption, billing generates through their data bridge, it starts with the assessors. Our system is completely integrated, so, yes, she does indeed use Vada quite a bit. I don't think you would per se call it a module like you would think of purchasing, but it's integrated.
So there's aspects of the assessor function.
Yes, in fact, we did billing today, her and I, and we're, it's back and forth. I'm at this point, back this up, I'm going to do, I mean, that's what we did today, and tomorrow I'll take it from the end and bring it to fruition and get those bills up on the website and get them to the.
So do they still use the CANA system up there?
No.
Oh, they don't?
No, no, everything is Vada.
Oh, so everything, even in the assessors office?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's good to know. I didn't realize that because I know that.
I think since 2010, Linda.
Oh, because I know the CANA here is going on to something new, something new for the state.
Is Tyler's in CANA?
Yeah.
Our system or?
What's the name of it?
Tyler Technologies is Munis.
No, it's something, but it's something else, or going on to something else now the state is, and I know quite a few of the town.
Munis is owned by Tyler Technologies.
That's what it is, isn't it, Tyler?
I believe it's Tyler, yeah. But I believe they're.
We need to just.
Work on background with that.
No, but I just wanted to ask her a couple of questions because I was very surprised that the assessors could use Vada, I didn't know.
Oh, absolutely.
I am too, because when I talked about Vada back in like 2014 about some of the stuff we had going on with our system when we first turned on the treasurer, they said at the time they didn't have an assessor module.
I know what you're talking about. You're talking about the actual creating the assessments.
Yes.
Yes, we don't, we don't use Vada for that. We use Vada from the point they created, which is where we were today.
Okay.
And we bring everything forward into our system via the data bridge, and all those bills are handled through Vada.
Okay.
So, yes.
Well, we are set up that way. Vada does integrate into the tax collector, so that's.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah. It's just different software integration.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Doesn't work well, I'll just say.
Okay, our next question is, and you've probably answered one of those already, what experience have you had in human resource management?
On a daily basis, I handle all of the benefits. We have several of them. We have, of course, Blue Press, Blue Shield, we of course have dental, but we also have a slew of different life insurances, different, couple of different companies we use, different options they're able to select.
So they all just don't use the same?
Nope, I have a slew of them. We handle all of the paperwork with Worcester County Regional Retirement, I handle all of the paperwork for the various insurance companies, take care of all the payroll withholding, do the balancing out between the actual bill coming in and what we're taking out of the employees' paychecks to make sure the town's not eating some of that cost. Make sure that for sure they're paying their share, we're paying our share as it should be. It's, we are personnel, I mean, we have a personnel department that handles new hires and hands off all the paperwork to us. We take it from there.
Yeah, because like down here, we don't have like a personnel department, the treasurer does the whole thing.
That's not the big part of the job. The big part of the job is the part hiring someone and handing them a packet that's been created by my office and it's not happy to deal.
Well, we've just, well, we had, since March, we've had an assistant treasurer. She was just like a financial clerk, and now she's, we got the job.
Holly, right?
Yeah, Holly is, we had that position passed at town meeting yesterday night.
I saw it.
Yeah.
I checked out your town meeting. I know you're mostly level funded, I know it's, I see your budget and what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't seen your books, but I know that.
Well, we've hired somebody, Carrie, our accountant, has hired somebody to come in and, you know, straighten out all the books.
Okay.
And audit, we're having to audit them.
Yeah. And when you said Carrie, I thought you had said Terry, and that's a different girl.
Okay.
And I realized after I said, did she think Carrie or Terry?
I can rack in my brain going, I think they're.
I told her.
You sure I don't?
Because I know Carrie, not Carrie. So sorry. But that's all right. I said, oh, I'll tell Linda when I see her.
Okay, all right. Clarence, what?
So, yes, what experience have you had with municipal investing and borrowing? Tax title, cash flow management, and budgeting?
Tax title.
Yeah, I'd like to hear about that.
Tax title, yeah. Well, when I came into, if you want to start in Holland, we had books open for 19 years. We had a collector that went to prison. I created those titles. She had created them all and put them in a safe and never recorded any of them, so our government thought everything was hunky-dory, but it didn't take long to realize that wasn't the case. So I did almost, almost 1,000 tax takings.
Oh, my God.
Yes, over there, and collected over $9,000 in those takings and foreclosed on those that didn't.
Wow.
Yeah. That was just Holland. Barry has been even worse. I came into Barry, I was told three or four years, that's why I'm probably, if you're considering me, I'm going to want to ask you some questions. I was told three or four years of the accounts were, you know, not up to par. Well, that's not true. It was back to 1974, it was 36 years that were open. And very quickly discovered, again, we are, we have an indictment and discovered that there was a great deal of money missing. And so I can't talk about that case because it's still ongoing, but I can say that because it's public. I noticed that takings hadn't been done in years, that tax title had been sitting, now this will be the treasurer's side because I got hired clean and all, the treasurer's side had been sitting there for decades, just sitting there, to the point where what happens is you get to the point where this owes this and it might be worth this, because every year you tack on, and this goes up, this goes up. So we did several, a couple of auctions. I've done 255 takings there. I've collected from August of 2011 through, I figured it out through last June, 800,000 in tax title. I did a tax lien sale, which I would truly advise is a real good way to boost those funds quickly, and we had a couple of auctions. So last year, we had collected 250,000 in tax title, we had 110 from the auction and another 50 from the tax lien sale, that's all free cash, that's pure free cash. I have extensive background and knowledge in doing that, and I know exactly what I have to do. And my legal background allows me to make sure that those liens, just because you have tax lien, doesn't mean you have something worth a nickel.
Actionable, yes.
So I like to do my own research, go into the registry, look for myself, and decide if we're moving forward. I've had a few of them that I've had to completely dissolve and redo, and then I did them, and now they're moving. Unfortunately, for some reason, Barry don't want to fund anymore, they don't think there's a good return on investment. I don't understand that, but they still have $680,000 in takings that I've done that need to move into Land Court. Yeah.
So that's one of those ones, it's, it's a, it's a two-sided coin, but at the same time.
Not to me.
Right. But, well, but if you're looking, so the thing is, if you're looking short-term, yes, the cost seems to outweigh the value, but when you're looking long-term for the town, it's critical to just keep moving forward.
It's absolutely critical to your physical health now and in the future that you continue that, and I do takings in the collector's side on a yearly basis, and if I had my way, we'd be doing a tax lien sale every single year after I aggressively reduce that very large number to a very manageable number.
Yeah, not funding that is like stepping over, stepping over nickels, stepping over dimes to pick up a nickel is what you're doing.
That's exactly what you're doing. But, you know, it's not my decision, but if you need that done, it won't take me long to figure out where you're at.
Number six.
Number six.
Number six. What research or professional development actions have you taken recently to improve your skill or prepare yourself for this position?
I've been going to school for 26 years. I finally got around to applying and have been approved to sit for my exam. Got my collector's one, just never, it was so much going on there. Everything had to be revamped, payroll had to be upgraded, changed, everything had to be balanced and brought up. No one had looked at benefits.
Please, but you've scheduled this.
I've scheduled this for my, for my test, yeah. I just finally got around to it. I've scheduled this for my, for my test, yeah, I just finally got around to it. I said, oh, I should do this.
For the certification?
Yeah, and last year I was gonna do it and I realized, I'm like, oh my God, I missed the deadline and just, you know, you get busy and it's months ahead, so, but I did, I got my approval letter today to sit for it, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, that's for you all finished?
Well, that was, yeah.
That was the question.
That was the question.
Okay, all right, now we're moving on to seventh. How have you boosted your relationship with your colleagues? And the second question is, can you share an experience where you participated on or as part of the team?
Well, I, you cannot run the department without being part of the team. I was a coach years ago, so, what I told my girls is the same thing I practice. You don't have to love your teammates, you don't have to leave here and go hang with them. But when you're on my court, everything is for the good of the team, so, you're passing the ball to her and I don't care what, it's my same philosophy. I'm not saying I wanna have lunch with everybody on my team, but I do make every effort to be that team player. Oh, I just told you today, I got into work at seven AM and the assessor was waiting for me and she says, I'm gonna stop billing, can you help me, I'm having problems, absolutely. We'll get this done in no time. And tomorrow, I said, I'll take the reins from there, you're all set. I do it on a regular basis, whether it's the town clerk who, when I first got there, her and I clashed. And I said, you know, I'm just gonna be me, this is who I am. Take me or leave me, I'm pretty even keeled, I'm not one to start screaming, yelling. I'm not one to lose my cool, I'm pretty even keel. Over time, and she's like, what can I do to help you? I'll help you in any way I can. I just be me. And that's it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So then, this position will require evening meetings and training outside of your normal work hours such as the treasurer's school.
If I couldn't go to that, I would cry.
Do you foresee problems of, basically, the questions?
No, no. They all, they all involve that, and yeah, I gotta be at school. And in fact, they're having Bartholomew, I don't know if you use them, but the people, the folks at Bartholomew, they're my trust fund.
But actually, we have them through our fund.
Yeah, Chuck is having, like, they're having a little pre-test thing and I would love to go to that, so. I plan on attending that, because he's very integral part of the treasurer's side of getting certified, and he's, he's a good friend too. But I wanna attend it so that I can get his perspective, because I think that's the yeast in the hole right there.
Now, do you have any questions for us, or anything else you would think?
I don't know if it's the appropriate time, but you bet I have a lot of questions.
And maybe Carrie can, Carrie can probably help and answer some of the questions too.
Yeah, let's just start with where, when is the last time we had the treasurer and the collector's receipts balanced? The treasurer and the accountant's receivables and receipts and all of her reconciliation sheet in balance? So, I know what I'm looking at, because it will be easy to I do want, I'm not gonna do another one and come in and be told, oh, three or four years, and then go, um, excuse me, folks, it's thirty-six.
Okay, would, would you mind? Carrie, do you wanna come up and join us?
It's a high caliber. You know, I'll move over here, so that you know.
But I think Carrie can probably be a good overview.
Yeah, I'm sure she can.
Carrie's been with us, she'll be here a year in August, then she came in and she has, she had never been municipal, but she's been doing very good at it and she's learning all her rules and regs.
Got to, right?
Yeah.
So, the last official audit was halfway through fiscal fourteen. However, I've worked over the last year and balanced with the treasurer until the end of fiscal sixteen. When we finally reached that point, she became ill, so, we're pretty, we're pretty balanced until about December. And then, again, she became ill, so things, things happened. But what, what we are in the process of doing is we contracted through VADA to have them come in, they are actually restructuring all the books, they're going to balance to Penny every account to make recommendations on where to put money that's just hanging out there.
Can I ask you which VADA guy?
I know them all. Yep, it is Justin Cole through Bay State Municipal.
Okay.
So, they actually have already started, just this past Thursday, we met with them and gave them their first round of material to start with. And that included all the treasurer's bank statements, all of my reconciliations.
Yeah, I'd be looking at those too.
So, I, I get that you would be concerned about coming into a mess. It currently is, but we're working on fixing it.
There's a mess, and there's a humongous mess, which you don't portray three or four years if it's three or four decades, you just don't.
I really don't think it's as bad as, let's say, Barry, from what you're saying, so, okay, good. So, but when he went in, it wasn't, so, I really don't think we even have an awful lot in tax title.
No, 'cause Sandy, Sandy was doing quite well with the tax title when she was here.
Yeah, so, there is some, some movement that does need to happen.
How much do you have on your books for tax takings? That are sitting out there? What's a lot? I mean, what you call a lot and what I call a lot might be the same numbers.
I don't have the documents.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-three or something?
Okay, that's not a lot.
Yeah, that's not a lot, no.
A lot of properties though.
That's okay.
Yeah, a lot of properties, some major ones that we've taken a lot of initiative on.
Yeah.
We have two major ones that we've taken initiative.
Yeah.
We found some buried Indians, to be perfectly frank, so, I mean, this is serious stuff.
I don't, I consider that a huge number, I'm used to the millions, you know, like
Two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousands of numbers.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, okay, that's very manageable.
And could there probably be more action taken towards tax title?
Sure.
Yeah.
Probably.
Some stuff that's stalled.
Right, but there's not.
You haven't gone beyond your three-year, your three-and-a-half years, where you're at risk of losing.
No, okay, no, okay, no.
So, schedule limitations isn't coming into play?
I don't believe so, okay.
Not, not any significant numbers, I haven't, I'll be honest, I haven't looked at the detail in a while. I've looked probably about, about a year and a half, two years ago. And at that point, we were nearly, like, we were nearly in sync from a standpoint of what was in tax taking versus tax title. There had been some stuff that we missed because we weren't doing it for a while, but we're already past it at this point, so, we're not gonna recoup that.
There's been a lot of cleanup and part of this whole VADA coming in and they're building us a new charter of accounts, because
It's very important how you build that, if it's not built right, it's never gonna work good.
And that's what I'm, I'm having, and I come from corporate, so I was having difficulty learning municipal as it was.
Yeah, I can understand that too, I used to do the books on private side.
Yes.
You start from zero and go up the queue, you start from this and go down to zero. And it took a, I'm like, okay, but I can do that.
So, it's, it's manageable now, we've done a lot of cleaning up, we've done a lot of interdepartmental restructuring, on how we proceed with things, we're working on a new manual, so, we've kind of spent the last year getting a bite into it.
Yeah.
So.
Do you have a good audit trail and a good flow, so everything's easy to balance and easy to?
Yes, yes, because it is, and even more so as we move along. Because without the treasurer in place, we've lost a lot of that structure.
Right.
So, the, the, I mean, the other departments have all really, we've worked well together to make sure that we're still following that structure, still keeping things together and, you know, doing the best you can. So, but, again, I wanted to make sure that you understood that we are going through a complete restructure, so you're not walking into like it's never been cleaned up.
Talk to me about your debt, what's your debt schedule, what's your?
Debt, I believe, is a little under two.
One, one-eight?
Yeah, one-eight.
And your total budget is around eight?
Eight-six, including the, including the emergency squad. So, operating budget, I believe, came out at seven-eight.
Yeah. So, it's a little, it's a little higher than they'd like to say?
We actually paid down quite a bit of debt over the last year.
My schedule, because it's probably
Yeah, we just built a new police station, so that's our big debt right now. And, and the reasons, the reason it's this high right now is because we've reached the, what is the five-year agreement on that? Or the four-year agreement where we've doubled into the payment, we've doubled the payments now?
Is it two-year?
Is it a two-year? Yeah, so they
Do you have a bond rating?
We have two years to lower it.
The percentage or?
No, rate.
I don't know, bond rate.
I don't think we're actually rated. You're not rated.
I don't believe so, at least according to the state DOR site, we don't have an active rate.
Then you don't have
We didn't talk about that the other day with them, no.
That's okay, that's something that can be worked upon.
And then I think tax was pretty much all paid off now.
Yeah.
That was paid off, and then I think, do we still all wanna fire Trump?
Nope.
Oh, that's all done.
Oh, no, that's, it is this year.
You have to look at that debt schedule and you have to see what's going on.
Basically, the only thing we have is the new police station.
Yeah, and a, and a small, small bill with the Sawmill Dam pond, or Sawmill Pond Dam.
So, I mean, when things dead, we're, we're pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it doesn't sound too bad, it sounds quite easy to But you have an August twentieth deadline looming for you for sixteen, are you gonna meet that?
Yes.
You have your, you have it all in place?
Yep, that actually should be filed by the thirtieth of this month.
Awesome, that is great. Okay.
Understressed, it's been a little stressful.
Yeah, sure has. We had trials and tribulations, believe me. We've gone through three treasurers in six years, so, ouch is right.
Here, oh, here too, we've gone through quite a few treasurers.
Yeah, it's very, I'm sorry, not treasurers, accountants.
Oh, accountants.
Three accountants, and it's like, really, I mean, you just get in it.
Well, we had, we had our accountant with us for thirteen years with us, and then she left because of sickness with her and her husband wasn't well either. So, you know, after having a long-term accountant.
Yeah, right, that's my point, it's difficult.
It's difficult.
Yeah, very.
And she was still in non-humus accounting?
Oh, you're kidding?
So, she wasn't even humus? She was kind of half-humus, half.
Are you, are you transitioning to?
We are completely moving to the standard.
Now, can you tell me about yourself, where, can you tell me, is it VADA on your side?
It is VADA on all aspects except for the assess, the assessors.
Okay.
And they're still in the, they're still on CAMA. And it is, they are working with CAMA to integrate with VADA.
And VADA was terrific at that, though, you will get there.
They didn't have a VADA integrated with
Yeah.
But that's all part of our restructure, I've managed to get twenty-five dollars for each department, so, but, you know, it'd be a benefit.
Yeah, I mean, VADA, I know it inside and out.
It's a, it's a very user-friendly
It's very user-friendly and I know every quirk in it, and I know what you gotta avoid, and I know what could be date, when they say date-driven?
Yes.
Take that to heart.
Oh, yeah.
Because otherwise, you're going to have a big old mess, and those are the things that ends up on Nancy's desk.
I did that last year when I started.
It was like, look what I did. Yeah, so, yeah, and you take that to heart, really.
But it's a learning, I did.
Learn and learn, that's right.
I've had twenty years of learning. You run into the wall, you feel the pain.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that again.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions?
I don't think at this time, I mean, I know you have other candidates, and I just wanted to get a feel for
How many hours a week could you offer?
I am only allowed to work nine-hundred-and-sixty hours a year. Now, that being said, I'm doing thirty-six now and I'm running a bigger town, two departments, but I do have a work, I do have two clerks, one for each of the departments.
Well, you have assistants then.
So, I mean, I am balancing out May right now, as we speak. I'm right on top of where we have to be, we don't have any backlog.
So, when do you plan on finishing up in Barry?
As I spoke to you and told you, I want to retire, I want to ease my burden. There are stresses, and I expect stresses on these jobs, because this job is extremely stressful. But there are undue stresses, and those where I say, I'm drawing the line, no more. Enough is enough. If you keep beating your head against the wall and it keeps occurring and no one's hearing, that's an undue stress. So, I am looking to take my twenty-six years, retire early and look for something where I can just come in. And I'm not saying I'm gonna be here every Monday at this time, I will with, with my assistant, she will know when I'm coming. It depends on what am I looking at with your books? What do you need, when do you need it? Am I have to dedicate more hours in the beginning so we can get where we gotta be, and fewer hours, I don't know. But when you have years and years of experience, what takes somebody else forty hours to do, I'm like, really? I can do that in fifteen, because I can do it with my eyes closed. It's the difference between having done it every single day for years and years and years. And honestly, I came in, I came into Barry and the first day I came in, no desk, no chair, no place to sit, work, no chair, obviously no computer. I'm like, oh wow, what did I do? I just left a twenty-year job. And, and I don't even have a place to work. The day I got my computer, I started looking in there and I said, oh no. I don't like, it doesn't take me long to look at these reports and say, I don't like what I'm looking at. And then I started asking questions and I didn't like the answers. It didn't take me two weeks to say I need either the DA or forensic auditor in here. It didn't take me long. I don't know why it took them so long, it did not take me long. It was less than two weeks, and I knew exactly what I know. I know exactly what I'm looking for, and it was VADA. And if you think I don't know them inside out and know what I'm looking at, I know exactly what I'm looking at. And I started looking around and I realized, hmm, not only do I not have a desk and chair, I don't see a file cabinet. So, when I opened this big old walk-in closet, there were on one side boxes to the ceiling and the, on the other side, three to four foot high piles of paper, that's how we file. So, if you want something from 2011, that would be the first year, so that would be the closest one. And if you want it halfway through the year, then you have to go halfway down the pile and look for it. I'm like, really? You've gotta be kidding me. So, that is what I walked into, and it is, for the, I've closed thirty years. There are still the six remaining, but I've done all the takings and secured everything that could be secured. The rest is either bankruptcy protection, that's another thing you deal with here. You need to know when to move, when not to move, when to file a stay, when, you know, you need to know what you're doing with that bankrupt, the new bankruptcy laws, that's another thing. As I think about, I do a lot of this stuff, it's just so routine to me, I don't sit and look at it. If it's in the manual, I do it, pretty much. So, I can't tell you what my schedule would be, I can tell you that I've asked Worcester County Retirement in the event that this works out for us, to give me, I would give a one-month notice.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I feel I need to do that much, because they're gonna have to find somebody to come in. My clerks are great, but they are clerks. I mean, technically called assistants, but I can tell you that they can do fifty percent of what I do. The other fifty percent falls squarely on my shoulders.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Very specifically. What experience do you have in developing what's referred to in other industries as standard work or visual work instructions to assist others in developing their skill sets in, in those fields? Because that, I believe, if on a very limited schedule like that, will be critical to, Brookfield needs to develop a bench. They need a bench of people qualified.
You have an assistant, obviously, I'm not a spring chicken. I'm not, you know, I don't know how old Holly is, but she's not as old as I am. And I realize that you need somebody that's gonna step into my shoes. The girls that are in my office now, one was a truck driver, she drove a bus, she was a bus driver, and one was, worked in a bakery. So, I have taken them under my wing, well cleaning all this up, and said to them, okay, I gotta train you this way, because this is forensic audit work, but this is not your normal job. So, we're gonna go through all of this and then I'm gonna retrain you the way you do it from the ground up. They told me that they like my system, I'm very patient. I will explain it to you five times if I have to. I know exactly what your trials and tribulations are gonna be, because there's not one thing that they do that I can't do quicker myself. So, it's a matter of them learning, making mistakes, and then I will always take the time to talk to them about why it's a mistake, what it costs, what it's gonna take to fix it, how it gets done. For the first couple of years, I should, I told them For the first couple of years, I, I should, I told them, I showed them it over my shoulder, then I started to let them. You, you made that mistake, you've seen this many times, go with it, show me what you do, and let's see if you got it right. And, and I'm very mentoring, I'm very patient, I never raise my voice to my clerks, I'm very honest with my clerks. If they did something, and I'm like, okay, we need to talk, of course, I know you're as loyal as can be, but you didn't understand this, I need to be sure you do. We don't wanna go forward with this, so let's sit and have a conversation. I've never had any of them upset. I have never had any of them storm out or do anything but say, I'm sorry, and I'll try to get it, do it better. It's not my nature to be that way, because I had to learn myself. I didn't have anyone drain me. I had to come in and do it myself.
Well, Holly's been here about sixteen years. She's worked, she works still for the water department, she works for the police.
Oh, yeah, I do water and sewer too.
And she, and she trained under Sandy for four years, so this is why she.
And Sandy was a very good collector.
Yes.
She was.
And then she, she was coming along as a very good treasurer.
Oh, I'm sure.
And so, she trained Holly, and so Holly was able to pretty much step in, she could do the payroll, and she could do a lot of things. But she really didn't do, couldn't do the posting on VEDAR, because she really hadn't had training on VEDAR.
She will have training, and she will be able to do it, and my girls understand it inside and out, and they completely, I don't do any posting. I, I, they do all of the balancing and posting, they give to me, I have my own system that I've set up, where they're integral part of it, so it's not just me handling it. But we work at a central area where I've created a book, where we all go to that book, and by looking at that book, I know what you're doing, I know what you're doing, and when you look at it, you know what I'm doing. We all know where each other is at, just by that. And if someone says, I need to find a packet from, I need to find something from a year ago, they know how to trace it right on back, find it, it's no ma, a matter of two minutes, and they've got that document. We also do, and I don't know if you do, but I like, um, I like automated, I like the, the bank, um, the machines where everything goes right to the banks. I have several banks.
Branded as that.
And, you know, I do that. I also have online, um, bank, uh, online where they can go in and pay the bills online, but it's not, it's not UniPay online. It's, uh, Invoice Cloud, where you can sign up and you can get your bill, uh, tested to you if you want, and you can hit the button and say, yep, that bill looks good, pay now. Or, no, you know what, the bill looks good, the due date is what? Pay on that day. Boom, done. Um, we have that for, we have, you can do email, you can do it on our website, you can do it over the phone, uh, you can do it at the counter. I mean, I have integrated a lot. I know UniPay, and I know most towns use it. For me, I want you to be able to look up and, and put everything in your shopping cart. And what I was gonna do, and what I had, um, contracted to do, is the dog licenses, everything was going to be. So, everybody can go in and say, we're gonna get my dog licenses, I wanna pay my water bill, I wanna pay this, in the cart, in the cart, in the cart, boom, done. Receipts go to you, you're all set. Or you could sign up and you could say, um, you know what, uh, I don't want these paper bills anymore. We'll send you an email two, two weeks from today, your bill is due, you haven't paid it yet. Uh, a week from today, it's due, do you wanna pay it now? Um, you know, you've paid it, thank you for your payment, here's your receipt. Um, anytime you wanna go in there, you can see your receipt, pull it up, print it out. I mean, I have pulled a lot of technology into the town, and made it very convenient for our people on the go to be in Texas and say, hmm, I wonder if I have a bill due. Oh, and the other thing we did is VEDAR, every night after midnight, sweeps all of their posted payments and updates them onto the website, so every day. When you look in there.
Yeah, I'm like getting excited over here.
That's what I've done in my spare time. So, you're asking me if, what, I can do in nine hundred and sixty hours? I've done all that, planned out thirty, thirty-six, uh, years. Done both things, trained new girls with no experience. Eh, yeah. Yeah, that's what I've done.
Okay.
And, um, obviously, when I come in at seven AM, sit at my desk, I don't get up unless I have to use the ladies room or have my twenty-minute lunch, until it's time for me to go. Because you don't do that and go party with the other party people. So, that's what I've done for Barry.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy, for coming in and.
Absolutely, and I'm now gonna go home and change. I didn't get a chance to, because I wanted to make it here by quarter past, so. And it was nice meeting you now, I can say I know you. Thank you for, Linda, always nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Um, I still go out this way. Do I still go out that, can I go out that door?
I can go out that door.
Okay, that's fine.
She's, she's, I'm sure she is. You want me to go get her?
Yeah. You guys have to do something about that door.
We need to go, because WD, WD forty around here?
Paul, check it out.
Paul, check it out.
Carrie just went looking for you.
Oh, you know, I was sitting in the kitchen because, well, I thought I'd get all the corn.
Have a seat.
Thank you so much.
Almost run up the stairs in the first place.
I'm sorry, I was in the kitchen.
Okay, we have Lonnie, who's been working here with us for about how many years now? Have you been?
I believe three and a half.
Yeah, she's been here for three and a half years with us, and she's been quite a bit with all the different departments, and I see she's worked in municipal government for quite a few years, down in Charlton, and she's been with Knoxford, so. She's quite experienced too with municipal. And she's been working for Holly for the last month, and helping Holly out, and learning the payroll, and I think she even won some of the posting, didn't you, on VEDAR?
Correct, and actually, I have a meeting with, um, Lee from VEDAR tomorrow, because, um, well, uh, some of the, the past turnovers haven't gotten entered. Since, um, our treasurer was, you know, left being ill, and so sorry, that, um, when I called him, he's gonna be able to help me go back so we can get to where we need to be.
All right, we'll start with our first question. What qualities do you have that would make us, would make you a successful treasurer?
Okay, so, as you stated, I have, um, several plus, plus years in the municipal government, so I'm very familiar where, with the way things run, I guess. Um, I have, um, payroll experience in all of my previous, um, municipal jobs. I did payroll for the highway department, the sanitation, essentially Public Works. Um, I did the payroll and budgets as well for, uh, the public works, and then the payroll and budget for the health department where I previously worked. So, I'm familiar with, um, I wanna say the system, the way things are taken in and turned over. Being a treasurer here, I already have a good, um, relationship with everyone in the town hall, because I've been here for so long, and, um, they all have confidence in me. Because since I started out with one job here, I now presently hold five different positions that have all been approached.
Yeah.
And asked of me, so, um.
You've done very well with all of them.
Thank you. I, I enjoy, uh, I enjoy Brookfield immensely.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Snyder's next.
Question number two. Tell us what you think of the essential functions are, what the essential functions are of the town treasurer.
Backbone, very, very important position, um, between the payroll, the deductions, the insurances, the bonds with the town. Dealing with, um, I believe by following rule, um, uh, budgets, and, um, dealing with the accountant. Probably daily basis, and the tax collector with tax title.
Wide, wide range of activities.
I'm sorry?
A wide range of activities.
Very wide.
Okay, can you tell us about your experience with any financial software?
Okay, so, a long time ago, I did MUNUS, which was, I believe, for the town of Framingham, which was, um, when I worked for Public Works. Same situation there, where I wanna kinda be in the backup of each person, so it was a MUNUS system, but I got a, a bit of the accountant and the payroll, um, and the office manager. And then I'm presently working in VEDAR, because I am working with Holly.
Great.
As well as access in Microsoft Office, depending on certain departments and how their systems work.
How, uh, I know it's not the financial software we use, but how, how comfortable are you in offline manipulation for reporting purposes of downloads out of something like VEDAR? Where you get a, uh, comma delineated file and, and maybe can do it in that, can you do like analytical work in Excel?
Yes, I'm very proficient at Excel.
Okay, great.
Good to you.
Okay. What experiences have you had with human resource management, like with payroll, pension, insurance, and benefits?
Okay, so, kinda going back a little, um, when I worked for the health department, I had two employees under me, so I was in charge of their payroll. As well as our, um, contractors, um, our agent. Been working for the highway department, I did all the payroll, uh, for the highway, and then I was backup for sanitation and water sewer. And with that came the shift differentials, because with unions, you get the four-hour pay. And then in the wintertime, because I was also on dispatch, so we had all the hired equipment, so I was responsible for all the hired, hired equipment's pay as well. So, I have a lot of experience in payroll.
And how about like with, um, did any of those have anything to like, say, with pensions and insurances or anything?
Um, I'm trying to think, when I worked at Boston Scientific, I worked in, uh, human rela, uh, resource, excuse me. So, I was responsible for filing and a little data entry then. That was a while ago, but it's still in there. With entering the payroll for these other departments, if there were situations where I would have to make sure that, um, again, the overtime or the shift differential, so I did deal with that. Insurances, um, I've had a little dealing with insurances, not so much hands-on, but yes, a little bit.
So, what, what research or professional development actions have you taken recently to improve your skills, your skill set, or prepare for this position?
Well, I've been looking online, and I looked up the, uh, the lovely treasurer's book that I believe is two hundred and seventy-three pages long.
About right.
You know, so, um, I started reviewing that, and, um, I actually, um, I came to Holly to ask if I could assist her in any way. And then now I presently hold the financial clerk position, so I'm definitely into it, so, yes.
Excellent.
How have you boosted your relationship with your colleagues? Can you share an experience where you participated on or as part of a team?
Let's see, well, I believe, um, I actually helped Carrie out if you have a meeting. We needed to make sure we had some numbers, so I asked Carrie if I could help her, so I did assist, I did page two, so, um, that's a definite one. Um, I'm pretty, I will ask if anyone needs help, and that's kind of how I got all the positions I have now. As the records access officer, the position is, um, very fun and exciting, and you have to be able to, um.
You have a gift for doing that on your plate.
You have to be able to, um, get along with everybody in the sense of, um, if someone asks something of me as the records access officer, I might have to go see Carrie. And I'll say to Carrie, or whomever it might be, you know, this person's looking for such and such and such, and she might be like, well, that's like about three boxes of copy, and I'll copy it for you. Don't worry, you just show, point me in the right direction. So, um, I guess those are a few experiences, and, yes.
And I've noticed, if I could jump in, I've noticed all the different jobs that she has down around here. She's, she's a very quick learner. She learns fast. So, Beth, what question would that have been?
That was number seven, I believe.
Did we ask her yet with the municipal investing, and she probably hasn't?
She mentioned it.
Cause you did, you skipped over it?
Yeah.
How did that happen?
No.
I did, if you'd like, I know in my previous job, we had, um, I have to think for a minute. So, we had a landfill, and we had a FAM, which is the financial assurance mechanism. So, the company that came in, they paid the town a certain amount of money, and with that, um, I kept record of all the payment and all the disbursements. And, um, I worked with the treasurer at the time, because of the fact of the interest on there, and when the town needed to ask for more money, so.
Excellent.
Okay, all right. You wanna ask, you want the last one?
Last question?
Yeah.
This position will require you in meetings and training outside of your normal work hours, such as the treasurer's school, so do you foresee any issues or problems with this?
I do not. As a matter of fact, um, if all goes well, I will be attending the treasurer's school in August. As for meetings, I just left one, so I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Um, whatever's needed, um, no problem.
Now, do you have any questions of us or anything else that you think would be helpful to know? Well, you know quite a bit about us, but.
I do.
Any questions about anything?
Um, I, I don't believe so right now. Um, I would like to say that, um, regardless of anything, it is such a pleasure to come to Brookfield. And I came to the town meeting the other night to, cause I know, um, the treasurer, the interim treasurer was, she had a previous engagement, so I thought I could sit in. In the event a question was asked, I could hopefully help out with that, so. I'm definitely dedicated, I'm definitely loyal, and I enjoy coming here every day. Thank you.
And do you have any, I, I mean, you've probably heard, you know, we had a few problems with, with things like that, and how Carrie said, I mean, with the restructuring. So, so you'd be up to helping out and just join right in with asking for it?
Absolutely. It, you work better as a team, and if someone's already on board with a process, absolutely, go with it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything more to say? Carrie, do you have any questions or anything?
I just, I enjoy working with Lonnie already. She is a, a get-to-it kind of girl, and doesn't hesitate to jump in, and she bakes really good cookies. That's a team building skill, so. She, um, yes, that's part of her team building skill. She's, we, we've all really worked hard this year to, to develop a good working team, and we.
I know you have. I think we have very good finances in my head.
Fun every once in a while, and Lonnie, Lonnie does participate in that fun, so.
I know she does.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you all very much.
We'll be in touch. Have a safe ride home.
Yes, thank you so much.
Careful outside, they're crazy.
Blast the air conditioning, that's all I can say. Okay. Thank you all.
Good night. Good night. Between the two, I know Nancy is very qualified. Very, very qualified. She could just jump in here, come on, and do it again, but the thing is, how many years would we, would we invest in her? Because, I mean, we've had so many treasurers come in and out, they stay a few years, and then they're left, and that's one of the things. And I think we should come to the point where maybe we should try to have somebody that would be, stay here with us for quite a few years. A younger person that would be with, I mean, not, no, it's no age discrimination, but I mean, Nancy's gonna. But I mean Nancy's gonna retire, so we don't know how many years that she's gonna be with us.
The issue is that she can only work.
And she can work so many hours.
And so what it really says is there really wants to be a backup to that plan. I mean, because she does have that experience and it's valuable.
Oh, yeah.
It's almost in my mind, is how you take advantage of that valuable experience that's available and train up.
Well, that's what, that's related to my comment about the bench and the training portion of it is that, you know, she brings a lot to the table, she really does.
I've worked with Nancy before and I know she's, she's one of these people. She's right there, she knows what she's doing and she's no-nonsense. And I think a lot of people that were around here did like that.
Well, and a number of the issues we had over the years related to whenever somebody questioned how things were being done, if they didn't feel it was appropriate, it caused a lot of friction versus if, it's different when somebody walks in and they know you're in a rebuilding point and you're trying to establish some stuff and it's, I don't know that there would be that automatic pushback, it would be more like, well, let's see how that fits in what we're doing. And I don't know that necessarily it would cause the type of troubles that it perhaps did in the past.
Because I know one of the departments specifically, I don't wanna name any, but I know that one of the departments, there was a lot of problems and Nancy tried to go over and help them out and they became very resentful because she applied to the position over here three or four years ago and I guess some of them said if she was here, they'd have gone. Because, I mean, she knew the right way to do these things and they didn't like being told what they were doing wrong.
Well.
The right is right.
And she knows the right way, she's been in it enough years, she's been involved for 26 years. She knows what she's doing.
That's why I see we have an opportunity where we've got an experienced person that could come in for a period of time that would have to be backed up because it's only 18 hours or less.
Yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, it comes out 18 hours.
Twenty, I think it's twenty.
No, it's, no, it's not, it's about eighteen.
Just a little under twenty.
No, because the way it's said is, the 980, 980 is actually the magic. No, I understand, I understand, but 980 is the magic number in the state of Massachusetts for something to be considered a seasonal position and not be benefit eligible. Okay? So the 960 is where they set it to offset sort of somebody, you know, works a few hours over, they're still not in a position that's.
960, it's still around 20 hours a week. Yep, and so I almost see where there's an opportunity where we could get that as a part of what's going on. And then we could take advantage of, especially if she's doing this now, looking to the other side, getting some training, getting certifications and whatnot in a parallel path, there's a point where Nancy would feel like we've got it done.
But here's one of the things I would like to propose. I would like to propose if that's the direction that we go, that we consider offering support for going to treasurer's school anyway.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
And I don't know.
Who are we talking about here?
Well, we need to figure out, we need to figure out a couple of different things, okay? So Holly's Assistant Treasurer, right? Is she planning on going to the August school?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know that Holly has interest in the actual treasurer's position.
Correct.
No, no, I get that.
Maybe sometime down the road.
Well, but what my point is, is from a cross-training perspective, is if we were to go, if we were to go with Nancy, okay? That we still offer Lonnie the opportunity to go to the school and support her going to the school.
Absolutely.
Okay? Making it clear that it's not that we don't value the contributions that she's already made. But that we, given the point that we are with our finances, it might not be that idea to have somebody with Nancy's experience in the door helping with the restructuring.
Yeah.
And I sent a note to Carrie earlier.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, well, and the note was, back to your plan. And again, feedback from the meeting that you had. I understand that, I appreciate that, it will take time. My concern is that the sooner, the better.
Yeah.
And so therefore, if there were additional resources that we could apply, and quite honestly, I'm thinking back to the consultant monies that are in the pocket, would be in the pocket for next year. We'd take a portion of those consulting dollars and maybe we gotta push them around a little bit, but to push those towards having additional resources available now to work the problem. And again, the other flip, pardon me just for a second. Again, Nancy, if she were available, wouldn't be available for another month anyway. We can get a lot of things done in a month, should we have the resources available. So it's almost like, you'd love to have these extra resources come in to help us at a point and, but at the same time, get going with the needs that we have. So I see this as a win-win.
With?
Taking advantage of Nancy to have her come in and then the flip it around, get Lonnie off to school for August and get her working as she's working.
Right, in the financial clerk's position, supporting the treasurer's office and continuing to.
With the long-term plan that we understand that Nancy would only be a couple of years based on her retirement interest and so that we would have a bench to a point available to us and we're homegrown.
I mean, the risk is.
In place people.
I mean, the risk is always, you know, you train them and they run off and go play somewhere else, but that happens.
But that's intentions.
Exactly.
So, now Carrie, would you like that motion? That we offer the job to Nancy with the idea that, caveat, that Lonnie has offered the opportunity to go to the school and that we move forward with that and let's see where it falls.
I think that will.
I'll second it.
Will second any discussion? How do you feel, Carrie on it?
I think, given the position that we're currently in, Nancy brings a lot to the table. I was very excited to hear her technology integration because we know that I am, you know, 100% from moving more forward with the technology for the town. So I do agree that Lonnie is capable of learning it by every stretch of the mesh and she's a smart girl and she will take anything we throw at her. And to not give her an opportunity would be a travesty to the town, I believe. She's a good asset. But I do believe that current goals would be to put someone a little bit more experienced.
I know, because Nancy, Nancy's done this, she knows it, she knows how to dance back and shake.
And she's got her interests as well, so there's a balancing that she can have possibly and we need to train up Lonnie.
We'll have to train, yeah, we can train Lonnie. We have to see now, I know on the budget, I know we have the Assistant Treasurer salary. Did they take, did you take out the Financial Assistant?
Well, wait now, what do you, wait now, we get a treasurer and a clerk, which you boosted into an Assistant Treasurer. But now you're talking about a Financial Clerk as well?
She's already working several hours.
She's already working several hours.
But what I'm asking you is you get a Financial Clerk plus an Assistant Treasurer plus we're gonna have a treasurer, is that what you have on board?
You have a copy of it from town meeting, I forgot to grab it.
I know what you're gonna say, because the explanation did say that changing the title to Financial to Assistant Treasurer would omit the, we would need a.
It was mostly the same hours, but we boosted from 17 to the clerk, to the assistant, to 22. But I didn't see any line in there for Financial Clerk.
No, there's not.
We're, I don't know, we were talking about that.
But that position though still is in the job description, we still had that position there, so we didn't do away with the position.
We didn't do away with it. And what I would recommend is that we fund the position to the numbers of hours that we need to get going, with what we need to get going.
So, and the flip side of it is historically speaking, we've, prior to having that budget split out for the Treasurer's Clerk, because for several years we didn't have it, what's that?
We're still under budget compared to prior years.
Well, right.
He was a Municipal Clerk.
Well, that's, right, well, that's what I was, where I was about to go, David, is that we do still have an account for Municipal Clerk. We can, we can, you know, fund, fund for now from that.
Yeah, for the municipal, and what consulting were you talking?
The consulting line that we have within our budget.
Yeah, we could probably take some of that and.
Especially to send her off to school.
But Municipal Clerk, you know Lois coming back, probably next month.
Well, I also have an Accounting Clerk open position, so maybe integrating Holly between the two departments, I've already budgeted.
Well, what would work better would actually to have Lonnie work as your Financial Clerk. And the reason why I say that is because we have to keep the firewall up between Treasurer and Accountant.
The only difference is the main position, clerks can cross.
Okay, they can.
Yes.
Okay. But that would, that would, the funding under your office would allow us to maintain her in a financial position?
For quite some time, yeah. Well, half a year at least. And then I could, I could work with her on my time in teaching her to reconcile from my side so that when she worked with the treasurer, she's already looking at the accountant's side. So she kinda gets it.
It would be a win-win situation.
So, now Carrie, I think the budgeting, we can play with.
Yes, I think we can.
But I think we need to see if these folks are interested in our thoughts.
Yeah, we have to call Nancy back in and we'll talk to Nancy and I think we should call Lonnie back in and tell her, you know, what we, the ideas that we have with her. I think that would be good.
So I'd like to call a vote, call a vote on the motion.
I will make, can you make a motion? I will make, I will pass that motion.
Aye.
Aye.
And so you get the ball as far as, pardon me, I'm gonna run next door.
I know, okay, I'm all right.
May I speak, Mayor Chair?
Sure.
We put, there's money in there for Holly to go to school. We put that into her budget, so just so you know that.
Okay.
We did not put any other money into anyone else, if that's what you're. Now you three tonight, now that's what I call leadership tonight, how you all decided. That's excellent, from a financial point of view. Very, very good. That's right, Ben.
Now.
So.
So I'm telling you what you did was great.
See when they're available.
See when they're both available, we can pull them both in like on the same night. You all like a group discussion?
Do you wanna do it on the 20th? Do you wanna do it on the 20th or not?
You want a group discussion?
That would be excellent. Carrie?
A group discussion with Nancy and Lonnie and you can come.
And Holly.
And Holly, the four of them.
I don't know. She's gotta work it, that they buy into the idea.
The next meeting's on the 20th, in case you want me to.
The 20th event. Do we have a lot on the agenda?
Can we get it?
Well, we're gonna do the, we're doing the appointments on the 20th.
So we're doing appointments on the 20th. When is, I know Holly's still away, when is she due back?
The end of this week.
Oh, the end?
I believe she's due back Friday, isn't she, Thursday or Friday?
I thought it was tomorrow.
If they buy in, let's try to set something up next week.
Well, I think one of the things, just from a standpoint of structurally speaking, what we really wanna do is put together formal offer letters from the stand, it should be part of the conversation.
You're going verbal now.
No, becoming verbal might not.
And then the verbal goes to, now let's have a meeting. And then we're buying into that, if we're buying into that, then the form, first law would go based on that.
Understood. Don't try to schedule around my schedule because I'm actually going to be unavailable probably from Thursday through Monday. So.
You mean this Thursday through Monday, okay.
So it wants to be next week, I think.
We'll have to do it Sunday next week. So we'll, we'll get a date so we can make sure we get everybody together and we'll discuss it.
See if we put a plan together. Excellent, thank you.
So do we wanna do anything like with, tell Nancy that we're very interested in her?
That's what I'm saying, is would you call Nancy?
Oh, sure.
And say that we're very interested?
I will.
See what the stipulations are back to the month. The idea of having a follow-up meeting with the team to get going with that so that we then can write a formal letter to both parties. Makes sense?
Makes sense.
Makes sense, okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
7:25?
7:25, any discussion?
Oh, can't do that.
Okay, well, adjourn.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, excuse me.